Good evening, and welcome to the September 25th, 2024 Columbus City Council meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and conditions for our own.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as printed? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a move to adopt the agenda for the September 25th, 2024 City Council meeting.
And this is Sue, I'll second. Thank you. The motion is put forth and seconded. Any discussion? And I'll take the vote. You can start.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are three items on the consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion to approve it? Or changes? No changes? Okay.
So I make the motion to approve the September 25th, 2024 consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, the motion is made and seconded, and since there's no discussion, take the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Motion passes. Moving on to item number C1, Public Open Forum. Is there anybody here for Public Open Forum? Looks like we have one person. You want to come forward and give your name and address, please?
My name is Lynn Carver Quinn, 7540, 152nd Lane Northeast. Tonight, I'm just coming in front of you because of Fall Fest. It was a wonderful weekend, even though it rained on Saturday, we can't control that. But those that were here had a great time. I do want to do a shout out to all the sponsors because without them, we wouldn't be able to put on what we did. So we had Batumis Roadways, Camping World, KI Auto Body, Blaine Brothers, Mastel Brothers, Dave's Hydroback, Westmore Fluid Solutions, Viking Industrial, Waldo Craft, Olson Sewer, Blaze Credit Union, Ziegler, and I want to thank some new sponsors this year, Larkin Hoffman and Bolton &amp; Mink. Thank you for investing in our community. We also had a new business that isn't even open yet, and she sponsored the Minnesota Veterinary Neurology and Ryback. So without them, we wouldn't be able to do what we did, and I want to thank them a lot because it just makes my job fundraising easier when people are willing to support the community. I co-chaired along with Janet, but we are just one piece to the puzzle. Without the volunteers that come out and help, the employees of the city, the public works, everything. I do want to give a shout out to Jack because I've never had a city administrator be here the whole time and jump in and work like you did. Every time I looked, you were running, doing something. So thank you very much for helping out. And all the volunteers. We are so fortunate and so lucky to have a community that really jumps in and does what needs to be done. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Actually, I had it on my list to thank people too, so you just did it for me. I will just add one more sponsor, maybe two. I didn't hear you say Blaine Brother Truck Line, so if I missed that, they were one of our sponsors, as was Running Aces. And I also would like to thank Jack and actually all the staff. We had a lot of staff working there. Everybody worked really hard. Everybody worked well together. Rain or shine, I saw people running around in raincoats and soaking wet, including Eleanor, who's now soaking dry on our screen. So it was really a fun day despite the weather, and I will just add my thanks to everybody and also to all of the council members that volunteered as well. It was a great time. Okay, anybody else for Public Open Forum? And there isn't anybody on the screen, right? It's just Eleanor raising their hand? Okay, great. Then we'll move on to, excuse me, item C2, MTW Truck Wash Conditional Use Permit. This is on page 5 through 41 of our enclosure.
If I could make one announcement before we begin this. Councilmember Bush asked me to let everyone know that he intended to remote in tonight, but he is in an area that has no Wi-Fi or phone service. So with that, we'll move on to the MTW Truck Wash Conditional Use Permit. And Eleanor Hahn will go with the staff report and the request from staff to City Council. Eleanor?
So this particular CUP has come before you previously at our joint meeting. We had that public open, we had that planning commission discussion. It was forwarded on due to concerns around water usage, specifically if our system can handle it, as well as traffic issues. I believe that there, we provided some additional information, and at the last planning commission, the applicant came forward and explained why a reclamation system would be difficult to use in this particular use. I'm wondering if anybody has questions, really?
Any questions from the council?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I had a few questions, but I got them answered ahead of time, so I am comfortable with everything. The one thing I just wanted to double check, I did see on the engineer's report that there were some additional notes. Are you okay with all of the changes that were made, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay.
They addressed my issues, so I'm good.
Perfect. All right. I can, oh, go ahead.
So I will make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for MTW Truck Wash in Resolution 24-15, a resolution to set the date for a public hearing, highway easement vacation.
Yes, so I didn't go over this very, just to go over that very quickly, we had some issues with an unused highway easement that's right off to the side of Hornsby. It was intended to be vacated back in the 70s, and paperwork never got filed. Things got a little bit lost and survey errors happened, but we can clean that up now. So that's what is before you as a part of this MTW CUP application.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yep. A question to the attorney, can we put this in one motion, or would you like it in two?
Two motions, please.
Okay. So let's do, let's do the approval of the vacation easement first, since that's part of what they have to have for their CUP. So could you just restate your motion, please?
So should I remove the conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Okay. So I make the motion to approve a resolution to set the date for the public hearing, highway easement vacation.
I'll second that. Ron?
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. That motion passes. Now you can make the other one.
Now I can make the other one. So I make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for MTW Truck Wash in Resolution 24-15.
Ron, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? And I'll take the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. That motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. We're really happy to have you. Yes.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Yeah, we are too. It'll be great. And I'm sure all the truckers over at Love's are excited about it too. Great, great news. All right.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Eleanor. Yes, for going through the process. I know it can seem really long and arduous, so you're very patient. Thank you.
We've never done it before, so it seems longer than...
Than it needs to be.
Takes a long time.
Yes, yes.
We're nervous about everything, but yeah, you guys have been great to deal with. Thank you. I'm sure it'll be a great asset out there.
Yep.
I mean, your plans look really great.
Yep.
I like the idea of not square buildings and kind of a little dynamic look to it. It could be pretty nice looking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. All right, then we're going to move on to item C3, the post-election review resolution. I know we have a number of members from that group out in the audience, so thank you for coming tonight. Jack, do you want to just go over the write-up for that, please?
Will do. The Anoka County Election Integrity Team presented a proposal to a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council on September 4th, 2024, requesting that council consider approval of a resolution to support the protection of the votes of citizens by checking the accuracy of machine counts to enhance the security and transparency of the vote tabulations and build voter confidence. Attached is Resolution 24-12, a resolution requesting general election, post-election review that is recommended by the Anoka County Election Integrity Team for council consideration.
Thank you. Was there anything else you folks had to add? Nope. No, I think you did such a great job presenting. I'm pretty sure we're good on this. All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-12 as presented.
I'll make the motion. I make the motion to approve Resolution 24-12 as presented.
And this is Sue, I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Then I'll take the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Appreciate that.
Yep, appreciate all your work.
Thank you. And you guys are very well prepared and informed.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yeah.
We just, we wanted, we wanted you to know that you're the seventh city in Anoka that has done this. So we're moving forward, and Big Lake in Sherburne did it in 2022 and again in 2024. So we do appreciate you listening to us and pushing forward with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Boy, now we lose everybody.
Pardon? I know.
We should have stalled it till later.
We still have Lynn and Cindy out there, so we're good. Okay, moving on to C4, the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. That's pages 44 through 45 with enclosures. Jack, do you want to go over that with us, please?
Thank you, Janet. The proposed 2025 Capital Improvement Plan was sent to City Council in their packet and will be brought up for discussion and recommended for approval tonight. The purpose of the Capital Improvement Plan is to identify capital improvement projects, to forecast funding sources, prioritize improvement based on available funds, and estimate a timeline for completion of those improvements. The City of Columbus Capital Improvement Plan addresses the following: parched capital and dedication fund projects, public works equipment replacement, fire hall capital projects and equipment replacements, road maintenance and street projects, and general fund capital projects. In all these categories, the city budgets money annually to cover project and procurement costs over the term of the needs identified in the plan. Allocation of funding over time allows for fund accumulation to cover expenses without borrowing and expedites the purchase and the acquisition of equipment and contract service with set aside funds to avoid drastic fluctuations in the city budget. The Capital Improvements Plan is presented to you, and at your seat, there are three additional sheets, Schedule A, Schedule C, and Schedule D, that have notes attached to them for the 2025 plan that memorialize the conditions set forth in the approval of those items. So if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you for adding those notes to the, to those schedules, since I know that a few months from now, I won't remember them, so it's nice to have them memorialized. Is there any discussion on the Capital Improvement Plan? Any questions?
No, none here.
No, I was just going to say that I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys did on the budget this year, keeping it down and actually just to look, I know we're not going over all the numbers yet, but we've gone over and over, and you really listened to us to tweak the numbers and reflect what we wanted to see in the budget this year. So I just wanted to thank you so much for all your hard work and listening to us and being able to keep the budget down.
And I would also add my thanks to Cheryl for coming to all the meetings so that in real time, you can answer our questions. That is so helpful. So thanks, thanks for doing that. Okay, so without any further questions, then I would make the motion to approve the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan as presented. I'm calling for a second. And this is Sue, I'll second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then I would go to the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Moving on to the 2025 Preliminary Budget Resolution, 24-13 and 24-14. It's pages 46 through 51 in the packet, and Jack, would you like to go over that, please?
Thank you. The proposed 2025 Preliminary Budget is presented to you tonight for your review and our recommendation for approval. General levy totals for 2025 are $4,231,505, while these totals for '24 were $4,232,386. This represents an $881 decrease over last year's budget, or a point, 0.02% decrease in the budget itself. The preliminary budget must be approved and submitted to the Anoka County Properties and Taxation Department by September 30th, 2024. Approval of the final budget is scheduled for December the 11th, 2024. Staff is requesting approval of the 25, 2025 Preliminary Budget and Resolution 24-13. And if you have any questions, we will be glad to answer them. Also included in this is Resolution 2024-14, which is a separate motion, but this is a resolution that just sets the date for the final budget hearing.
Did you also want to just mention the additional handout that you had for the EDA-HRA?
Yes, on page 47 or 48 of your budget, there's a duplicate on the proposed tax levy certifications. Both of them are for the general revenue fund and the EDA. That was a misprint, so you have a handout now that this will replace page 48, which is a certification of the EDA levy.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Ditto my comments from before.
Do you have any?
No, I have none.
Okay, then I will make the motion to approve the 2025 Preliminary Budget and Resolution 24-13, a resolution approving the 2024 tax levy for property taxes collectible in 2025.
This is Ron, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. So that motion passes. Moving on to the second motion, I would make the motion to approve Resolution 24-14, a resolution setting the date for the final budget and tax levy hearing.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
One quick question. Tax levy hearing. I don't remember, did we set a date for that?
That will be, that's what this is for. That'll be, the tax levy hearing is the consideration of the final budget.
Okay, okay.
So it'll be in December. Okay.
That's it.
Any other questions? Then I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. We are moving on. Okay, the third motion. I make the motion to approve the October 1st. Oh, do we have to talk about that first?
We can.
Why don't you go ahead and just explain it, please?
The City Council Workshop Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The following items are recommended for the meeting, meeting agenda discussion. A DocuWare Document Management Presentation, it's a company we've been dealing with, had a meeting with last week, that will offer a proposal on their services for document management. Chapter 14, Public Health, Wells, Sewers, and Utilities Ordinance Revision, this would be pending completion of that edit. And one that we've just been requested to add is a proposal or a presentation from SafeBilt for online permit presentations, which is kind of falling kind of right in line with some of the issues we're dealing with now, which may be interesting to hear that. So those are the three items we would consider for, recommend for inclusion on the work meeting for the October 1st date.
Can you repeat number three that you were, that you want to add?
SafeBilt.
SafeBilt.
That's Minspec, formerly...
They used to be, they used to be Minspec.
Okay, thank you.
So a little clarification on that. We received an email from them just, I think, what, Thursday?
Yes.
Wednesday? It was late, no, today's...
It's Monday.
Tuesday. I don't know, it was earlier this week.
It's only Wednesday.
Yeah, should feel later than that. We received an email offering, or alerting us to the fact that they had this online permitting module, and would we like to see how that works. And since we're in the process of, you know, going to be posting our permit text position, it would be really helpful to see how much, you know, could actually be done online, and then what additional resources we'd need to put that in place.
Okay.
So then I would make the motion to approve the October 1st, 2024 work meeting agenda as recommended by the city staff with the addition of an online permit presentation by SafeBilt.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Okay, on to letter D, the consultation liaison and staff report, city engineer.
Good evening, council members. First item on the agenda. So we're working with Anoka County on closing out the grant dollars for our West Free Ride Drive project. Both Jim and I have had conversations with Jerry Ojai, who's working on the paperwork to close out those grants. As you recall, we got about $2.3 million in grant money, one through an LRIP redistribution to the project, and also as State Park Road Account Grant as well. As part of that closeout work, kind of the final engineering work that is yet, is in process, is the closeout of the permit with Rice Creek Watershed District. And SRF was the design engineer for this project, and so they have all the background information, and they applied for the original permit. So they are working on the documentation required for that permit closeout. It requires an ASBilt survey and checking versus the plans, and also a check versus the wetland mitigation. And so they're in the midst of that. They have submitted a couple of bills to the county for that work. And the county, you know, in the past, has always requested authorization from the city to pay those bills. Their SRF contract is with the county, but the total project costs are kind of likely to be in the $2.6 million range, and so any overage over that grant money is, is city cost share. The city has already made a payment of $257,000. That was happened back in January of 2023 toward this project. So there will be a balance billed at some point, and some of that will include some of this engineering closeout work. And so the county's just asking for approval by the city to pay these bills to SRF. I think in the past, these invoices went to Elizabeth, but, but given Jack's lack of familiarity with the project coming in at the end, we're just bringing these invoices to the council and just making sure everybody understands what these are for. So we're just requesting approval for Anoka County to pay these invoices to SRF Consulting.
So we have to approve Anoka County paying the invoices?
Yeah, because the contract is with Anoka County, but in the end, Anoka County is going to go through their accounting process, and there will be another bill coming to the city for the last of the cost share on this project. So some of that will likely include some of this. Jerry's still working through all the numbers on the grant, so we don't know quite what the final number is going to be, but we do know more than likely, it's going to be less than what we expected at the beginning because our costs were, both on the construction side and then on the engineering side, were less than expected. So I think initially Jerry said the balance was going to be around $107,000, but it's likely to be under $100,000 in the end, so.
And from my understanding, to make sure that there was total understanding, I asked Kevin to give this explanation. So we do have two invoices that we've received, I believe, they're for $23,000. Those will be presented at the next meeting for payment, and then as Kevin said, there may be one that'll follow up with this one. But I just wanted to make sure that I was familiar with it and council was aware of this follow-up on settling this up with Rice Creek to SRF and the county.
So we'll see the invoices next, at next meeting?
Yes.
No, no action needed today, other than just say we're comfortable with the process?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the invoices total just over $10,000, and like, like Jack indicated, there's probably going to be at least one more because SRF's not quite done with their closeout of that permit yet, so.
Okay.
The other item is just an announcement on my part. Just want to let you know that this will be my last year as city engineer for Columbus. I'm moving into retirement mode beginning in 2025. And so first of all, I just want to express my appreciation and my total joy in working with the city, with both the staff and the council. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. But time moves on, and I just, both my wife and I have made the evaluation that it's time to move into another stage in our life. And so I have six kids and soon to be 10 grandchildren, so there's lots of things to spend my time on, and so we're looking forward to that. Having said that, I'd like to bring forward a new engineer for you, Brian Bachmeyer. Brian has been with the company, with our firm, for three years. Prior to that, Brian was Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of Oakdale for over 30 years. So brings a tremendous amount of experience to the table, and I think you'll be very happy with Brian. He probably brings a lot of experience that I don't have to the table, and what I'd like to do is bring Brian to the next council meeting and the subsequent council meetings for the rest of the year, so he gets familiar with, with you and with the city. And he's met Jim, and so that would be my proposal, that he be introduced and then attend the remaining council meetings this year, just to get up to speed on everything. And I'll work with him on getting him up to speed, and also we'll be hanging on, on an as-needed basis into 2025 to make sure that all my transitions that are, need to happen will be completed. So I'll still be a resource to the city, to Brian, in whatever capacity's needed, so.
Well, congratulations. I'm so jealous. Well, that sounds exciting.
Well, thank you. And like I said, it's been a lot of fun working in town. We've got a few things done. Hard to believe it's been five years, but, you know, time flies when you like, love what you're doing and enjoy the people that you're working with, so.
Oh, thank you. So you'll be with us at least through the year?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't have to say our tearful goodbyes yet?
No, we'll have to think of something good before...
So if you need something, you can squeeze what I have left out of me for the next three months.
And you know we will. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing.
Okay, great. City Attorney?
No report, no announcements.
Wow, my goodness. Mayor and the City Council report. I just want to wish our mayor speedy recovery. He's not here tonight because he's at home ill, so that's the reason it's just the three of us here. Moving on, Ron, do you have anything? Moving on, Ron, do you have anything?
Well, we had a park board meeting here in September 17th, just to get you up to date on some things. That moving the lights from Kettle River Boulevard to the parking lot by the tennis court and putting in the light on the large northern parking lot, the cost came in at $2332, or $2,323. Includes new transformer and talking to Jim over there. As soon as they get the check, they'll start working on that, so the lights will be in the park on that. We talked about the tennis court report, our repair, and there's got to be more discussion on it, and they want to take it up at the next meeting in November. Talked about the dead tree removal and looking at taking some funds to dedicate removal of the dead ash trees this winter. With the number of trees that are dead, they will start with the ones that pose a safety hazard first. And I think a lot of them got ribbon around them over there, don't they? Yep?
I actually talked to a contractor that went out and gave us a couple of bids. And the way that I had them bid it was east side, west side, so we could kind of get an idea of what it was, not necessarily most dangerous, but just all of them. So we know what we're in for as a total. And we can, you know, at, at that point, pick and choose what we want to cut potentially, but, or, you know, cut everything on the east side first, cut everything on the west side, whatever, whatever is decided. But I felt that we should probably at least have a number. So we kind of knew what we were in for, so.
Well, I know.
Don't ask me what that number is off the top of my head because I don't exactly remember, but I sent it to Jack and Lori, so the park board will have that one at the next park board meeting.
Well, we waited around long enough to keep falling over over there, so.
True statement.
We also talked about the holiday lights and the motion was to prove $500 towards that project. The mayor had offered some tree stands, some of these that they had at.
Out Air.
Out Air. These are like metal braces that are artificial or whatever. And so what we're going to do is maybe put one up and see how the park board likes it or what it looks like and stuff like that. And Chris King and myself are going to research the lights, see what cost we can get on it. And so we'd like this item discussed early so the lights can be up around Thanksgiving. And then the next topic they talked about, they thought the joint meeting with the city council was positive. And the third item, maybe we're just talking with Jack here, we're going to resume talking with the FLA, Forest Lake Softball Association, about dugouts. They're still interested and they want to carry on a discussion about it. So that's coming up in November, or hopefully in the next month or two. That's all I have.
Thank you. How often do they want to have these joint meetings with us, do you think?
I don't know. They didn't, didn't mention that.
Nope. They don't want to do it again. They just thought that one went good.
I don't think they want to come every week.
Well, no.
That would make two of us.
I, I did recommend though, I think it's a good thing to have it once a year, so everybody's on the same page and we're communicating with each other. So I would look probably for another one sometime next spring or next summer, unless you want one more frequently.
Well, I, I don't know, this deal with the, we don't know where we're going to go with these tennis courts, I mean, the dugouts. So I don't know if we have to have another one, do we? This year with the council or?
Well, what we need to do is find out, number one, is how much, you know, again, they're willing to contribute for them and find out a way to see if we can make it fundable. And then we can have a, probably, doesn't necessarily have to be a joint meeting, but we can get a proposal and present it before city council. They can be here present to answer any questions if they'd like. But that will probably be something on one of our agendas, if we can work out some kind of agreeable funding formula with the Forest Lake Athletic Association.
Good.
I just have a couple of things. I was at the Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting, I think it was last week. And Jeff Drain did, you know, we voted him in and he did attend. So that, that is done. And our other Columbus person is no longer. So he's done. Jeff is in and it went really well. They are, we're going to finalize the budget next Friday. And then Paul will be coming to one of our meetings coming up to kind of go over the, the budget. That's that. And then I just wanted to let mainly Cheryl know and anybody else who's interested at the Fall Fest, I had reserved a balloon artist. And that did not show up. Didn't show up, didn't call, nothing. And so I did call there first thing Monday morning and they were very apologetic. She really, she didn't know that. Nobody had called her, nobody called me. And she did say that the person had gone to the emergency room, so that was why they didn't contact anybody. But they cut their checks on Wednesday, so we'll get a full refund. So the check should be coming in the next, within the next week. So that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for following up on that. He or she was missed. Lots of people were looking for it. Maybe they'll be able to come next, next year. So my report, I just have a couple of things. One is, we had a Sunrise River WMO meeting on the 19th. Does that sound right to you, Jack? You were there two weeks ago tomorrow. And it was primarily to approve funding of a project. I think you might remember a while back, I had mentioned that we had gotten $75,000 from the Lower St. Croix Partnership towards the Sunrise River WMO. This was from the two-year funding that they get for that one watershed, one plan from, from Bowser. And there's a project that they already had lined up, a biofiltration basin on property on Coon Lake. So this is for one of the lakes that's in Columbus. And we approved bids to build that. The contractor that got the bid is also a Columbus contractor. It's Dunaway Construction, so that was nice to see one of our local businesses benefit from that money. So they'll be starting construction on that. And I think it's, I mean, it's how it should work. And I was really happy to see that we, we got the funding and it actually benefited Columbus because I know in the past, there's been some concern that because we don't have our own set of lakes, just part of Coon Lake, that we might not be getting sort of full value from being part of that watershed district. So I think this is a good example of, of what we can get. And then I don't have a planning commission report because.
We had a joint meeting.
We had a joint meeting. And this, I'm done with my liaison, so does, do you know who the next person is? Is it Sue?
Yep.
There you go. So I just thought I'd make sure that you knew that. Handing the torch off to you. So then we'll move on to, oh, I'm going to do the personnel committee report too, because I can't, I can't get enough showtime in here. So a couple of things. One is, we had posted the position for the city assistant city administrator position. We had very good response. We had 51 inquiries, which meant that we had 51 resumes or, or notices coming in through Indeed or through our website. We had 30 complete applications that were submitted. Jack has been going through all of those right now in the process of scoring them. Next Tuesday, we have a personnel committee that we will be going through the scoring and determining who we are going to be setting up interviews for. So we're moving forward with that. And then, as you know, in the consent agenda, there were two positions where we had resignations. And so we have gone through, looked at those job descriptions, made sure that they're still current with what we need, and they are. So we're ready to move forward with posting those. We're going to wait until we have our city credit card so that we can set up a paid account with Indeed, which will create a lot less manual work. And so once we have that, and I think that's the end of this week it's supposed to come in, so we'll probably be posting those positions fairly early in next week. The pay scale is the same as what was approved for the current position, so there's no change, no charge or change, sorry, to the budget. Nothing that needs council approval, just giving you an update. So this is, this is the accounting assistant and the permit tech positions that we'll be posting. Any questions? Then we'll move on to public works.
Ms. Mayor and council, feels weird only having three people here, and I think that might be the first time ever for me. I, I was contacted by the trucking company that hauled our gravel this year. And they ran through all of their customers this year and they are out of work. And they didn't want to lay off any of their drivers in September, so they started calling our businesses to say, hey, we will honor this year's price and charge you next year if you want to haul more gravel this year. So I'm moving that forward and I know that we potentially need to have some discussion on that, but you know, it would be good if we can, not detrimental if we don't. So there, the, the current bid is $19 a ton. I've gotten other bids earlier this year that were over 20, I think they were $22 or $23 a ton. So, I mean, it's conceivably cheaper, knowing that over the years, their costs go up, just like everybody else's, next year it's ultimately going to cost us more. So it would financially make sense if we could do it this year, but if it doesn't work out, it's not a make or break deal for us. So I know that Jack did a little bit of research on it and I'll, I'll let him cover that quickly and then we'll just, we'll talk this through.
I think the big thing is, is if we elected or could elect to do this, it's a time-sensitive thing. It would have to be done within the next two or three weeks to make sure the application was put down correctly. The bigger issue is how we would handle it from a procurement basis. You know, is it something we could, we can't do a change order because it would essentially be more than 25% of the previous contract. I did have a discussion with Bill on it this morning. He recommended probably the best way to do it would be to go get another bid. That may be difficult to do on a short-term basis, especially when somebody that we've gone to before has never gotten this bid. They may just say, you know, I'm not submitting one, or they may drag their feet. And I don't know if we could do it as a contract extension. I guess that's the same thing as a change order, but Bill and I had a discussion and I'll let him review any potential avenues we have about being able to do this and being able to fall within the procurement laws.
Acting Mayor Heckland, council. The, since the price is below $175,000, we don't have to put it out for bid, but you would have to get a second quote. You would have to make an attempt to get a second quote. If you can't get a second quote, I think you can go forward with the price, particularly since it's at this year's price. But the contracting law at that dollar amount does require that you make a couple of calls.
Or a couple of emails, so I have at least, I can show that I made the attempt?
Yes.
Okay.
So would, so would the question that Jim posed would say, we have a vendor who's willing to extend 2024 prices, but not bill us to 2025 if we do the work now? Can you match that?
Probably not. It would be more kind of generic than that. We're looking at a contract for this fall and we'd like a bid on such and such amount.
But isn't a big appeal of this is that they're not going to bill us until 2025? So, I mean, this is where we have the money budgeted, right?
Correct. So, so therein lies the difficult part for me, is if I go out for bids, I got to go out for bids and then whomever gives me that bid, I have to, the caveat is you can't bill me till 2025. That's what makes it, that's what makes the process painful for me.
Right.
That's why I was hoping we could just say that we're going to do the extension or addition to the contract, because I don't know anybody that's going to give me a bid that is going to potentially be willing to not charge me till 25. That's what, that's what makes this process a little more painful.
I can look at the extension option. It sounds like, Jack, you already did. But let me, let me look at that. I think if you give a conditional authorization, then we'll look at that extension option if the council's comfortable with it.
And do we have a contract with this, this vendor?
They were, they were low bid. They're low bid every year.
Right.
Which, which hypothetical goes to the comment that Jack made. It's hard to get people to give me bids.
Yeah.
Because they don't ever get the work.
Okay.
So, so at some point you run out of, you know, options where then, you know, the, the go-to for me is I email people, say, this is what I want. And I can print off those emails and put those into my folder for my, this is, I made attempts to do bids, but nobody's responding to them.
Right.
So that, that's what makes it difficult when you have a, a company that continually does it cheaper than everyone else. Nobody wants to bid.
Right. And, yeah, and so the, the reason I was asking the question is I don't know that you can extend a contract if we haven't executed one yet. And I don't think we have, have we?
Well, we approved the bid price and I don't know if there's a written contract or not, because this was probably bid out early this year. I've never seen one about the contracts. We could extend possibly the, the bid price or the work. The only thing, you know, if we do that, the condition is that we still will not pay until 2025.
And my preference would be that you send out the emails and, and document it.
Yeah.
Because really the obligation is to get more than one quote for that price range.
But would it be okay if he put in the caveat that, you know, bid, bid for work being done now, but billed in 2025, since that, that's really the appealing part of.
That's the caveat.
That's the caveat.
Yes, it's okay. He's trying to match, he's trying to match a bid.
Okay.
And so to match, you know, like kind to like kind, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Do we need a motion or can we just direct staff to do that?
It would require a motion.
Okay.
I got a question real quick. Does it, is it, you're going to lay this right now, let's say. Is that going to be another winter it goes through? Are we going to lose gravel or is that going to be a, it has no effect on it or?
What, what do you mean, are we going to lose gravel? So as a, as a catch 22, we lose gravel every year.
I know.
So whether it's dust or snow plowing, and, and you lose a certain amount of that when you plow through the snow crust, you will, there will always be a certain amount of gravel that goes in the ditch. Our process is pretty good here. We'll lay it down, we'll roll it. It's early enough in the season, we're going to get some rain and, you know, we'll, we'll grade it and pack it. So, so I mean, I don't see an issue with it, doing it at this time of year. We just generally do it in the springtime because we put calcium chloride down. So I want to always have that done before our calcium chloride is down. That's, that's always the push for me and why we do it in the spring and not necessarily in the fall.
Have you ever done this before?
Never. I, I've never had anybody contact me and, and make this offer, so. It is, it must have been a good year for everybody or they weren't hauling that much. I, I'm not really sure what their, what their deal was, but, you know, they made the offer and I ran it by Jack and we talked about it a little bit, figuring that this is where we would end up. But it's easy enough to make a, to send out a couple of emails and say, you know, can you give me a price? And by the way, I don't want to pay you till 2025. So I, they, somebody, you know, may respond to it or, or may not, but at the end of the day, at least, you know, we'll have the record that says we made an attempt.
So you have the roads already marked out that you want to do or you do them all?
No, I have more roads to do. So, you know, because like this year, we did $60,000 worth. That got us basically three roads done. There's a handful more roads that I can do that are, were on my list of roads to do next year that if we, if we do it this fall, it's just less that I have to do next year. And, you know, there's always a time crunch, you know, and the spring is rainy and they're trying to haul gravel for everyone else. So literally we finished gravelling and almost the next week, we're putting calcium chloride down. So if we could do half of it now, it's, it's definitely helpful for springtime for sure.
I suppose you don't have road restrictions you have to wait for and all that.
Absolutely. So I mean, you know, last year was a great year because we didn't have any snow and the road restrictions came off relatively early, so people were moving early. Now, hopefully not, but this year, I mean, it could snow all the way into, you know, April. And, you know, you, you know what I mean? You just, you just don't know where you're going to end up so that, so that window can be very large or very small to try to fit that stuff in.
And this is a highly unusual offer. I've never seen this done before.
Never.
And it's just a way, we just wanted to present it. Cost savings, we don't have a full number on it, but I'd say it's going to range from $3,000 to $6,000.
So I have a question, and I think it sounds like a good deal, but typically, for the accounting practices, you are supposed to pay when services are rendered. So I don't know how they get around the accounting practices to have services this year, but not pay till next year.
Well, we would probably have to treat that as the work would continue up to December. There may be a few little things they have to follow up on, and that'd be part of their deal that, you know, we'll do it, but you don't pay till 2025. And that would, in other words, it would take it out of next year's budget. The thing that would do, those roads that were going to be done next year, a portion of them wouldn't be redone again until 2026, so.
So I kind of look at it like it's a work in progress or process. So I won't get all $70,000 done this year, so I'll finish it next year. And, I mean, it's no different than, you know, we just talked about West Freeway Drive. You know, we've been working on that for a handful of years, and we make payments, but it's not an asset to us till we make that final payment.
And we track all of those for the audit. It's considered construction in progress, and I have an Excel spreadsheet that I fill out for the auditors each year.
Okay, so it isn't, I mean, it's services, but not like services as in...
Right, because we would be adding the assets.
It's under a different category. Okay. Thank you.
So they would deliver the gravel here, the entire order, and then you put it down as much as you can put down? Is that how it works? No?
No, so as part of my, my bid process, I request a certain type of truck, and I request a belly drum, and then they spread that however far I tell them. You know, I want a 100-foot spread or whatever. So that's what they do. So that $19 a ton is a delivered, applied on the road, and then we blade that out.
So...
We do the, they lay it on the road, we spread it out, grade it, outroll it.
So what they bid on earlier in this year, they're really going to deliver on just part of that? Is that right?
Say that again.
What they bid on earlier this year, that they're now kind of trying to move the, move the timeline up. They're going to deliver just a portion of that this year, and the rest will come next year as you get it done?
Correct.
Okay.
I will not get through the total budget for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would basically pick two roads probably and get those done, because we have other things to do. Now we're coming into that time of year that we're switching gears to. So, you know, we'd have to hypothetically get emails out, try to get a response as quick as possible, and potentially have them laying gravel by mid next week. And then that allows us to get the rest of the roads ready for winter and, you know, do all of that kind of stuff, so.
Just a question. Do you anticipate then coming back with the contract amount, the additional amount? Because if not, then you're going to need that authority in the process.
Say that one more time.
Are you going to get a specific bid from them, or do you already know what that number is?
I know what that, so they're going to give us the same pricing that they've already done this year? So, and that's basically so many dollars a ton. So I dictate how many tons we take. Does that make sense?
Yes, but to spend that money, unless it's already approved, don't you need to include that in the motion?
They just approved the capital improvement budget for next year. So that number is in that capital, so I think, I think we're clear that way.
Yep.
Agree?
Okay. I wanted to just make sure that you didn't have to come back to the council.
For sure.
Okay, who wants to be brave and make the motion?
Not me.
Do you want to give them the motion you're looking for?
Sure. The motion would be to approve Public Works to go out for bids, to do more gravelling this fall, with the payment to pay for that gravel in 2025.
So moved to have a second.
I'll second it, Ron.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye. Go for it.
You, that is all I have.
All right. City Administrator report.
Thank you, Janet. I'd like to say thank you to Lynn for the kind words. Fall Fest is a collaboration of many, many parts, and I would like to especially thank city staff. We had six city staff involved in the event this year, and they all did yeoman's work. I was probably the only one that stayed dry, so I really thank them for their efforts and all the volunteers and city council that were involved in this. It's a team product, and I thought it went over very well, especially considering the weather that we had early in the morning, and I certainly enjoyed it and look forward to it next year.
Thank you. Thanks.
I do actually have one more thing, if you're done. I was contacted by the Columbus Elementary, I think I'm going to say the PTO, and they do a touch a truck. We've had this conversation in the past, but I know that not everybody was always in favor. So they contacted us again to do that, and I guess I'm just looking to see if you guys are all right, if I have a guy come in and bring a piece of equipment to Columbus Elementary.
Is this the truck or treat or something?
Truck or treat, yes.
Okay.
And what day is that on? Is it on a weekend?
I just shut my computer down, but I think it's, I think it's October 21st or something.
Okay.
And then candy too, right? We're going to get rid of our 10 pounds of candy that we didn't use for Fall Fest?
We have fair buying.
So in the past, what we, so initially, when we did it, I purchased all the candy myself. And then when Elizabeth found out that I was buying all the candy, then she talked about anybody that wanted to bring in candy could bring some in, and then we would do that. So if city council wanted to donate some, or Bolton and Mink, or, or our attorney, anyone can at that point, but, you know, then that's, then that's what we'll hand out, so.
And this is during regular business hours for you guys, or...
No, it's on a weekend.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm an open book. We're going to pay a guy to come here. So, and, you know, I've said that in the past, but, you know...
What, are you taking over that, a grader, or...
I don't know. I, I mean, it could, you know, we've taken a road grader, we've taken a skid steer, we've taken, you know, a dump truck. So, you know, whatever, whatever the guys decide they want to drive up there, so. I don't, I don't dictate.
I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing to contribute to our community.
And we do have, we have a bunch of candy leftover. You can just take, I mean, it's, it's a big bag. I don't know how many pounds, but it's pounds.
No, fantastic.
All right. So I think that's, it sounds like everybody's in favor of that. I don't think we need a motion for that.
We do or don't?
No.
Okay, perfect.
No.
Okay, thank you. That, now that's all I have.
All right. All right, so then, moving on to the announcements and reminders. Fire board meeting on September 26th at 5:30. We have a city council workshop meeting on October 1st at 5:30. Planning Commission and Joint Council Meeting on October 2nd at 6 o'clock. City Council Meeting on October 9th at 6 o'clock. Absentee voting for the November general election is open at City Hall from 8 to 4, Monday through Friday. And the local government officials meeting, we just got an email on that today. October 30th, Coon Rapids Fire Department Number 3. Oh, they're having it in a new place. It's not going to be a bunker, huh?
Correct.
So we need to let you know if you want to come. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, anything else? Does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. I'll, we'll take the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. And Janet, aye.